Commissioner's Court of Appeals, Annual Regisual on October 3, 2017, 10:00 AM, Commissioner's Court, Cleveland County Administration Building, 207 Texas Avenue, 3106. First item on the agenda is in Texas pledge allegiance to the US Texas flag. Chaplain G. J. Jones is not here and Commissioner Pauline will lead the prayer. But I think it's likely that Chaplain Jones is back in the hospital. He's not doing good. So keep him in your prayers. He's not in good shape.
Thank you, Judge. Father God, we do come on the late report. First of all, we want to ask that you should give all our sins and troubles to God and our struggle. We ask that you let your own home, Chaplain Jones, be seen. Let him know that he is with, is well, and that we are praying, that we have touched his eyes with their feeling touch, hear his voice, hear his name, for blessed families that are there surrounding him. Father, thank you for all that you have done and you are doing for your great grass down. Thank you, Lord, for the leadership. Thank you, Lord, for the law enforcement officers on the streets daily. Thank you, Lord, that you have given us the wisdom and if you will, Lord, provide us with more wisdom than our hearts, that we might learn from you and our decisions, that we might be the servants that you have us to be. And we be glorified in all that you do and all that you serve. This is your servant's prayer, number five of the thousand.
Amen.
Let me introduce to the flag the United States of America and two other colors for which to stand. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. On my behalf as President, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one nation under God.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is for citizens to give good and our concerns. I think we've got a few in speakers' order. Marie Wolf, 4576 Sandpiper Cove College Station, Texas, 77845.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I was hoping not to have to return this week, but since the county's application to city for a realignment of Harper's Ferry to Margrave's Ranch Minor Collector, city file number 17-0582 is still on the P&amp;Z agenda I had to. Yesterday, I received a reply to my open records request to the city for all emails relating to the application. I'm still going through those files, but it would seem, based on what I've read so far, that the application is an error. There is no Margrave's Ranch Minor Collector going to intersect with Arrington Road. All three of the minor collectors on the city thoroughfare plan are not within Margrave's Ranch land. Thus, Margrave's Ranch has no Arrington access until such time as four landowners north sell or Wyndham Ranch to the south sells. So why is the county pursuing the change? I'm entering into record the Mitchell and Morgan thoroughfare plan change dated August 2017. Remember that the county engineer didn't sign the application until September, another strange part of the timeline I talked about last week. There are many other items that need to be discussed and answered before the county should go forward with the application. So I'm asking again that the county be transparent and withdraw its application until such time as the citizens have a chance to be part of the process. I'd like to thank the city staff for requiring the application. Else, the Nantucket residents would have never known what was happening behind the scenes in the county. I would like to thank Commissioner Aldrich for meeting with us ladies last week to attempt to answer our questions. I got the impression that he shared a concern that the numbers not adding up on the traffic volumes from the different charts within the TDM that was attached to the city application for realignment and entered into record last week. There are other questions that still need to be answered, so I'm entering into record my email dated September 28 to him with the attached list of questions and the county engineer's email dated October 2 to show my transparency. At the same meeting, we presented Commissioner Aldrich with a petition requesting Harper Ferry Road be closed at the intersection of Harper's Ferry and Arrington Road, which I'm also entering into the record. This was done to help our pedestrian safety issue that no one seems to address. Government transparency is important and I'm very concerned about the county's transparency based on the emails I've received from my open records request to the city. I would hope our county officials also deem transparency important and stop the application. I'm also concerned that the county has changed plans on Arrington Road from the direction in March 2017 at the BCS MPO meeting, where it was stated that there would be three lanes from the city to below Harper's Ferry to the now two-lane improved for all of Arrington Road. I have a map that I picked up at the March 2017 BCS MPO meeting that I would also put into the record. The map shows that Arrington Road was then, as it is now, designated as a minor artillery with a 105-foot right-of-way, yet another example of the transparency by the county. Plan changes without citizen input being aware or allowed to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Mary Lou Price, 4587 Cricket Pass, College Station, Texas, 77845. I would like to focus my time today on an interesting document Mrs. Wolf received through an open records request with the City of College Station. It is a certificate of authority signed by Mr. John Elliott, a manager with the Oldham Goodwin Group, on July 31, 2017, and I've put it in the record. The certificate stipulates that the City of College Station is initiating an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan that will affect the city's thoroughfare plan. It also authorized Veronica Morgan with Mitchell and Morgan to execute and submit to the City of College Station an application in support of comprehensive plan amendment on behalf of Oldham Goodwin Group, to attend all meetings and hearings in connection with such application, and to take all action on behalf of OGC in connection with the application. That fits in with the timeline of the application being signed by Ms. Morgan on August 17, 2017. She signed the document three weeks before the TDA was completed by Kim Lee Horn. To an ordinary citizen, that seems odd. This certificate of authority proves how we were totally misled by Mr. Jason Schubert with the City of College Station. He stated in an email to Mrs. Wolf that Brazos County initiated the application for amendment. As I stated last week, neither Mr. Munger nor Mr. Aldrich refuted that claim, so we were misled by them also. The developer has also stated it was his understanding that Brazos County initiated the application, but his company hired Mitchell and Morgan to execute and submit the application on behalf of OGC. It just seems odd that Mr. Munger didn't sign the application for amendment until September 11, 2017. A week later, on September 18, a public notice by the City of College Station was published in the Eagle about the public hearing for realignment. Last Friday, we met with Mr. Aldrich concerning our numerous issues on this matter. We really appreciated the two hours he spent with us. Mrs. Wolf had a list of questions we wanted addressed, but we didn't get most of them answered. We left them with him and he passed them on to Mr. Munger. Mr. Munger replied to Mrs. Wolf on October 2, and one of the topics he addressed was the hiring of Kim Lee Horn. Apparently, given the timeline, we now know, the company was able to complete the traffic demand analysis in a little over a month. Mr. Aldrich told us county hired them for fiduciary reasons and believed it would be cheaper to use them since they did the prior TIA for the developer in their rezoning request to the City of College Station. The TIA was very lengthy and detailed, but I couldn't find any data in the report that corresponded to the traffic numbers for the various roads that were used in the TDA. In contrast, the TDA was very brief and contained only eight pages. There was no supporting documentation to verify the projected traffic volumes. In January of 2016, the volume of cars at the Harper Ferry and Nantucket intersection was around 650 per day. According to Kim Lee Horn, the projected volume using the existing alignment is 1,900 per day. The projected volume using the proposed alignment is 2,200 per day. South Oaks is even stranger. Existing alignment is projected at 400 per day, but proposed alignment is 3,600 per day. Arrington Road between South Oaks and Green Prairie is expected to be 7,200 with the existing alignment, but 10,600 with the proposed alignment. How is it possible these numbers could be so different when the proposal is just to move a road a few hundred feet and make it easier to go through Nantucket? I can see there would be additional traffic on Harper's Ferry, but why would South Oaks see an increase of 2,200 and Arrington between South Oaks and Greens Prairie increase by 3,400? How do you arrive at these numbers when the same volume of 5,300 is projected for Castle Drive in both models? That's the only number that stays the same. In the realignment model, total volume on all roads combined is 61,300 compared to 55,600 for the existing alignment. Does anyone really believe that moving that road a few hundred feet mean that traffic volume would actually increase by 5,700? If so, why would you want to make a change that actually adds a significant volume to those roads? Assuming Mr. Munger read this report before he signed the application on September 11, I would think he would have seen the blatant discrepancies. It just has the appearance of a very sloppy report that was completed with a very short timeline. As I said last week, something just doesn't add up. It's apparent the city was the entity that initiated the realignment, not the county. It's also apparent that Mitchell and Morgan was hired by the developer, not the county, to execute the application. It seems like sometime after that point in time, maybe after Ms. Morgan signed the application on August 17, the county was asked to sponsor the application instead. If that is the case, my question is why? Why is it so important for so many people to mislead us? At what point did it become necessary for the county to appear to initiate this application, and why? Why did Mr. Munger say county was able to employ Mitchell and Morgan for this project using a standing time and materials contract they had with them, and then subsequently Mitchell and Morgan contracted with Kim Lee Horn? Surely, Mitchell and Morgan was paid by both the developer and the county. If the county did pay Kim Lee Horn via Mitchell and Morgan, I hope you reexamine their report and consider asking for a refund from them for delivering such a questionable product. I request the county rescind this application for realignment. If you still believe the realignment is necessary, hire another firm other than Kim Lee Horn to do a thorough TDA. I also request that Misty Lane and Connecting Streets be added to the study parameters. No one will ever address that entrance to Nantucket, even though it will be significantly impacted by both the developments in general and the realignment in particular. Finally, I would like to state my disappointment with all entities for not including our neighborhood in the discussions throughout the summer. Holding a meeting just to inform our representatives of your plans is not dialogue or cooperation. We have told all entities numerous times that we would like to be included in order to allow Nantucket to provide suggestions to mitigate future safety concerns. Mr. Aldrich told us on Friday how disappointing it is that most citizens are not engaged in local politics. Well, why would people want to be engaged when no one really wants their input? Thank you.
Susan Harden.
Hello. My name is Susan Harden, and I live at 4712 Nantucket Drive in College Station. I also spoke last week and basically want to reiterate my concerns with the change singular that's proposed for Arrington, and in particular, what I mean is the removal of the turn lane, as was, I don't know if I can say, promised to us back in March by the MPO, because Arrington is now planned as a two-lane, 105-foot minor collector road. The other piece that I'm concerned with is the realignment of the entrance and exit into the Margrave property with Harper's Ferry, as I mentioned last week. And it's in particular the coupling of these two changes that weren't allowed citizen input that I think is going to create a really terrible safety hazard. I understand, as do all of the women with whom I've been working, the importance of citizen input into important decision-making processes. And in particular, these processes that we're focused with are absolutely going to impact us and our neighborhood, and we feel that it's really important for each of us to be here as frequently as is needed to try to change things before, as Marie likes to say, before it's too late. So I request, as the previous speakers, that the proposals be changed back, A, to their original form with a turn lane so that the people who have driveways on Arrington don't need to be so concerned that they're going to be rear-ended by people heading south on Arrington, and further, the people turning into Nantucket from Arrington don't need to be concerned. By moving the entrance into Margrave's development, which apparently isn't even on Margrave's property at this point in time, as Marie recently discovered, it's going to be keeping that change, that request of change, is going to be keeping people on Arrington for a longer period of time, keeping more traffic on Arrington, and again, increasing concerns for safety hazard, rear-ending accidents on Arrington. The other thing that I'd like to add, essentially as an aside, is the majority of people who live in Nantucket, we recognize that we live in an ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction. We have absolutely no input into what the city does as far as being able to vote for members of city council. We rely on you guys to please work with us, to try to help us keep our communities safe. And if there's something that we need to start doing as far as being able to have a voice when someone lives in the ETJ, to have a voice as far as city council people are concerned, I'm personally willing to start going down that road and seeing what needs to happen to make sense. How can somebody who has control over us, but we have absolutely no voice in electing those officials? That's not representative government. And there have been a couple wars fought about that, and I just shake my head. I don't see how Texas would allow that situation to happen ever. Thank you.
Good day to y'all, Judge and Commissioners and others, and others out here. My comments will be fairly simple and easy to understand, I hope. Obviously, with most of the Nantucket residents, which I have been a resident, by the way, somewhat over 20 years, so I've watched the area grow, and obviously, we recognize that growth is occurring and will occur, and we knew that Wyndham and Margrave's land would eventually be developed and traffic would increase, and we all bought our land for our residences with that knowledge that things would change over time. But our concern is for safety or security and so forth in the neighborhood. We're concerned about the shunting of significant amounts of traffic through the neighborhood that would affect the safety of kids on bicycles and mothers with strollers, and we have all of that occurring, obviously, significant, a lot of walking, a lot of neighbor get-togethers and so forth. Our roads are not designed to be major traffic carriers, and so all I have, basically, for reference material is what I've accumulated, but it's with the recent proposed change. Back in 2004, and this, by the way, is the Mitchell Morgan drafting of the change of the roads back to have Harper's Ferry lined up with the drainage of traffic from the new Margrave's properties. What basically concerns me about that is just what I've said, and that's something that when I was president of association back in 2004, I worked with the College Station City Council and the Planning Commission and so forth, and they initially had the same thing, and we talked about the integrity of the neighborhoods and the opportunity that we have during this stage, the planning stage, to achieve the goals of having traffic flow that's efficient and effective, and also then protecting the integrity of the existing subdivisions, such as, of course, the Nantucket subdivision. And so, obviously, I would say that we need to be careful and look at the long-term impacts of some of these decisions. Now, thinking about the development, and as I say, I've been an astute observer of the traffic flows, and if you look at the movement down the access road toward the Nantucket entrance, the primary use of that from north to south is to use the looparound. Okay? The looparound is very efficient for people to use, but that's not possible to be used if you're using Harper's Ferry and Nantucket as the egress out of the subdivision. And so, the only way that that can be used effectively is if you use South Oaks Drive and improve it to allow people to come down Arrington to the northwest and exit on that and use the looparound to avoid the mess that we have that occurs on the Fitch and Six. And that's a bottleneck in the mornings, which results in a lot of alternative traffic patterns. And so, looking at the Mitchell Morgan report, it would make a lot of sense to me to have an additional road that goes to the South Oaks entrance and let them flow down the access road to use the looparound that they're wanting to use, and that would take care of a lot of the traffic problems in that area. Of course, there's still a big need, and I know y'all have passed the traffic control light there at Greens Prairie and Arrington, or no, what am I trying to say? Greensbury Trail and Arrington, where you're putting that light up. That'll be a great help and actually take care of a lot of safety issues. The other thing is Greensbury Trail has the opportunity, it looks to me like, to be a four-lane divided road to carry a significant amount of traffic with the rights-of-way already in existence. And this map that Mitchell Morgan put together, or the chart, shows only one connector. There needs to be a number of connectors to facilitate movement to Highway 40 as well as Six to carry the traffic out of the Margrave's area. The Margrave's residents are not going to be looking to go to Houston as much as they are to employment in College Station or Bryan, and so they're going to be going north. And then when they come home, obviously, it's the same route system, and so I don't know who the traffic engineers were and haven't visited with them about how they drew the lines, but I doubt if they had much experience in watching the traffic flow in that area. And I think it's important that y'all, with your knowledge of the traffic flows and where people are going to be going for the next 20 years, in order to make decisions about road placement. So that's all I have to say. I'll be glad to answer any questions, Judge.
We won't be able to respond or have a dialogue. I appreciate you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other call to this and input or concern? Get novel to take action against items 3 through 34, number three proclamation 17-027, declaring October 2017 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Okay, thank you, second. Come on.
I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll give you the opportunity to...
Thank you, Judge.
Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity and security and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including the abuse of children and the elderly. And whereas the problem of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic and racial, social barriers, and are supported by social indifference, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, wherein Bryan College Station, Brazos County, throughout Texas, the United States, and the world, and now therefore, in recognition of the dedicated advocates to respond to and provide services for men, women, and children affected by domestic violence, Andrew Nelson, Mayor Bryan, Carl Mooney, Mayor of College Station, and I, Duane Peters, Brazos County Judge, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to work toward improving victim safety and holding perpetrators to the domestic violence accountable for their actions against individual victims and our society as a whole.
Thank you. We appreciate your support. I appreciate that, Judge. I didn't know I was going to say anything, but on behalf of the Brazos County Coalition Against Domestic Violence, as well as all of the cities and the county, I just want to thank you for your support, your continued support, Commissioners and Judge, for all the work that you do to help us not only combat domestic violence in this area, but also educate citizens in the community to the impact that it has on all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been sitting in the first Citizens' Academy for the DA's office, and we've learned a lot about what y'all do, and y'all stepped up on the program and really have gone after some of those perpetrators, and so, thank y'all. And thanks for what you do, because I know you're actively involved, and you do a lot to keep that program going and talk with the victims, and so, thank you.
Thanks, Judge.
Oh. Do we have a motion, second?
Yes.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number four is letter in support of Brazos Transit District's Tiger, nine, application for funding, which support critical transportation needs to Texas.
With approval.
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Five, they travel request for Fiona Meyer, Maggie Cannon, and Tammy Wofford with Brazos Valley Fair, ready to attend 2017 International Affairs and Expositions Commission in Las Vegas, Nevada on November 26 through 29. All expenses will be refunded by the Brazos Valley Fair and Virginia. Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion makes second.
So, the attorney said that if the staff is going to Vegas, that we probably need legal representation and then auditor and treasurer to do as well.
That's not part of the motion, however.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number six is approval of medical and dental premiums for FY 2018 and the effect of that.
With approval.
Second. Motion makes second.
Motion makes second.
So, the staff is going to Vegas, that we probably need legal representation and then auditor and treasurer to go as well.
I don't want to.
That's not part of the.
I certainly hope that not be the case.
That's not part of the motion, however.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number six is approval of medical and dental premiums for FY 2018 and the effect of that. Second. Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number six. A request from budget office for the following personnel change is effective October 1, 2017. This change will have no effect in the FY 18 juvenile grant budget.
With approval eight to seven.
Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. District attorney for the following personnel change, change is effective October 7, 2017. This change has no effect in the FY 18 district attorney budget.
Move. Approval of A, B, and C.
Second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine. Respectfully request approval to retain the Kawasaki Mule purchase of 2011 that should be replaced via the 2018 budget. Mule will be used exclusively as backup in the intent that we need mechanical issues with any other via remutes.
Second.
Second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 10 is request approval of one-time section for purchasing policy. Purchase a new microwave oven in the actual complex. The original microwave purchased for the complex no longer works. With approval. Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 11 is request approval of county court of law number two, uniform policy and paid authorization of M&amp;M apparel in the amount of $281.74 for uniforms purchased or was not obtained in advance. And that's just my comment. We don't typically buy shirts, you know, and that sort of thing for, in general, the offices. We do it in law enforcement. We do it certainly for maintenance and so does the deal with public. We just don't typically do it, but it's, I'm okay with going ahead with, I don't know, Judge, you want to?
Just sort of say, the people who may have kind of got a hit of us, we didn't intend for them immediately to make shirts, but they did. And we had the idea that this would be possible, but it's not, I'll just, so one way or the other, we'll end up doing whatever we think is appropriate. And I mean, I would just tell you that, I mean, some of the commissioners have got, you know, shirts with logo, think they purchased them with their own money, you know. So, that's typical what we do. I mean, we do provide them in certain instances. I mean, you know, if it's a department that's going to be out like dealing with the public with like IT staff, there's some IT staff that, I mean, I don't even know who all the IT staff and they're coming through. Well, I prefer they have something on that says IT and at least, you know, the new guys, I know who they are, you know. So, those are the kind of things that, you know, that we take a look at and might provide, you know, a shirt for or something like that. But we, typically we don't do that, just offices in general. But I, the action's already been done. I'm okay if we go ahead and approve it and move on if that's what we wanted to.
I'm sorry, I don't think it's kind of, has it been want to get into?
Right.
But how can you do it for one officer and not do it?
Yeah, I know. I.
Yeah. Maybe this is something we ought to, yeah, have in our discussions for next year's budget, maybe adopt the policy and say, okay, if we come up with some specific justification or basis of need.
I think, I think we kind of.
I think that that might be in order, but maybe we need to, if it's codified, not that we say, hey, this is, these are the positions, these are not the positions, that might be helpful for us to where we can at least not open the door to everybody in that type of thing, just a thought for the future budget session.
Okay. What, I think we've got a motion and a second to approve. Is that?
Yes, sir. That's correct. I'll call for the question.
Okay. Is there any more discussion first? Okay, all papers say aye. Aye. Opposed. No motion carries.
Was that unanimous?
Yes, I think unanimous. Okay. All right. Thank you, Judge. Well, payment authorization to AD Care for accessibility specialists in the amount of $575 for AD inspection, purchase order was not obtained in advance. Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. For on-site landscape supply in the amount of $1,715.10 for miscellaneous landscape irrigation supplies amount exceeds the balance that was on the purchase. Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 14 is approval of the following jobs.
They are, they are moved to approve one through 138.
Motion makes second. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 15 is approval of TC DRS effective rate for 2018, and I think that is 14.25. Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 16 is approval of Deer Oaks EAP contract renewal. Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 17, interloper agreement, City of Bryan, City of Compostash, for emergency medical ambulance service for 2018 through FY 2020.
With approval.
Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. 18 is approval of following community support contract rate for FY 2018.
With approval of A through F.
Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
19 is master service agreement between Athena Health, Brazos County, for electric medical records for employee clinic. Would you remove that?
Pardon me?
That item should have been taken off the agenda as discussed.
19.
Yes.
I offer motion that we remove item 19 from our agenda.
Motion makes second. Intend the discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. When you used to discuss and take possible action on a contract with Jasper County for pre-adjudication detention services.
With approval.
Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Discuss to take possible action on a contract in Austin County for pre-adjudication detention services.
With approval.
Second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 22, renewal contract, 15 days, zero one six hour for internet services with managed network solutions. Five potential.
Second.
Second discussion. And.
Good morning again, Marie Wolf. I don't know if this is the appropriate contract to comment on, but I do a lot of searches and I do them for educational reasons, to understand what other counties are doing. And when I was doing the no trucks searches, it was interesting Brazos County never appeared and yet you had an order that had done that previously. So, what I think I'm asking for here is that your records be put in a searchable form. And right now, they're not. You actually have to go and open up every record and read every record instead of searching them.
Are you looking into know this agenda, public website, like where the minutes are kept?
No, I'm on the internet and that's why I'm here because this is internet services.
But I mean, on the internet.
Yeah, I've gone to, I've gone to those too and I've, I put searches in.
Because there should be a field, okay, and you try to do like a keyword search.
Yes. Well, I mean, it brings up something, but I shouldn't have to go like, I don't go to every court and search. I go on the internet, on my search line, and I put in parameters, no trucks, and magically things pop up, right, from all counties, small and large. I could bring you a list of the counties and some are very small, that those things pop up on. So, that's what I'm looking for, that it's externalized in a way that people can access that. I mean, it would have been good to know, you know, be able to search other things besides that. And even when I do search them on your site, it doesn't highlight the words that I've searched in any fashion.
But it does bring up the.
It'll bring up a list, but then I, I can't, I have to read the whole document to find the words that I searched on. So, I, I don't know, like I said, if this is the appropriate place to make this comment.
That's actually our agenda software, it's limited on searches.
And in this contract is our access to the internet is really not how our information is, is the ability for Brazos County to be able to access the internet. That's what.
Okay, so could you, somebody send me the right person that I can have that discussion with to get this moved, you know, to have a.
I think what you would want is us to update our agenda software is what it sounds like, so that you could, unless there's another way to do the searches, but.
I'm not quite sure that's what I understand. What you're saying is if you go to some search engine somewhere.
Or Google, use any of them.
More likely Google, because it's kind of the standby go-to. But when you search on a search engine, the data, based on the number of hits and as far as how they rank them popularity and priority wise, you don't see Brazos County's data appearing there.
Right.
Okay. So, that's an issue with whoever we have an interface with that's our search engine on an identity and if it would be more convenient for people to have our database, our data be more searchable, that wouldn't have really applied here, but if we wanted to have more searchable data, that's, we may need to just explore with our IT folks or whoever, how do we have more searchable data in the way that we're put together?
Okay.
If that would be a convenience and you think it would be something that would benefit our community.
Well, it would definitely benefit me. I search constantly and, you know, a lot depends on the parameters you put in and what you get, so.
It's great having, I mean, one of the duties of living in the information age is you can find all this stuff.
Yes, absolutely. So, when I, I don't.
Being findable is beneficial.
Right.
I think.
Well, from my point of view, the more I can get, the better. So, and, you know, I'm here as a citizen, so if this isn't the appropriate place, would somebody contact me and let me know who I need to have that discussion with so I can get it moving?
I would talk to our IT director. I really don't have a clue how you can, how you can write, your information can rise to a higher level in Google, you know, I don't have any idea how all that.
Yeah, I, I'm sure, I'm sure, but I've been a software engineer for 30 years, so there are ways to do that and we, I just need to talk to the appropriate people to have them focus on it. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think we've got a motion and a second. Is that correct? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 23, deal of contract 18 dash zero one seven, actuarial services for Gabriel, Roder, Smith, and Company. Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. His warrant contract 18 dash zero two one, fire extinguisher spring persistent inspections, maintenance, and testing. I think that's what Davis Fire Department be quoting, I believe was their reputation. Second. Motion makes second to approve Davis Fire Equipment. Need discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 25, acceptance of Saddle Creek subdivision phase 11 into Brazos County road maintenance system, the roads portion of Saddle Creek portion, canvas backhoe, majestic, overcourt, and roadway drainage structures are in compliance with Brazos County subdivision and development regulations, site located in precinct one. With approval. Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 26, is to request permission to enter private property owned by Samuel B. Cohen at 6265 Blue Ridge Road Drive, County Road, Dead Tree, District of Kentucky, of all the roadway sites located in precinct two. With approval. Second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 15 is final flat of Foxtail Estates, 16.883 acre blocks one, blocks one through 13, George Stephenson Survey League, A dash 51 Brazos County, Texas site located precinct two. With approval. Second. Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 28 is final flat of the Cordeal Everett Edition, block one, blocks one and two, 5.10 acres, Maria Kagan's Lee, A dash 28, City of Bryan, ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, site located precinct two. With approval.
Second.
Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 29 is request permission to enter private property owned by Gerald Anderson on Leonard Road, 1.7 miles southwest of State Highway 47, property is being used as staging area for Brazos County equipment materials for work being done on Leonard Road, site located precinct four.
With approval.
Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 30 is application for following.
With approval of A and B.
Second. Any discussion? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 31 is budget amendments, budget amendments FY 16 slash 17, 53.1 through 53.3, and budget amendments FY 17 slash 18, 1.1 through 1.5.
Second.
Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 32 is for update on human policy, second through group three. Second. Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 33 is personnel change or status. I think we've got a, let me see, we've got an addendum.
New personnel, we just have to do it. We can finish personnel, we just have to do it before.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Motion makes second, and I think that the district clerk should be classed as a 17.05 position one instead of a position three.
Move to, move to another addition.
Can you tell me that again, Judge? I'm sorry.
Heather Williams district clerk should be classed as 17.05 position one instead of position three. Okay, motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And then I think we need to go to the addendum. Let me see. Yeah?
Uh, yes, I think.
Needs to go before paper claims. We had an addendum that was added to the, to the agenda after the agenda was already posted, that is interloper agreement, City of Bryan, Brazos County, and City of Bryan, Brazos County, City of Bryan, Brazos County, economic development foundation.
With approval.
Motion makes second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Then we could go to paper claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 7159866, or claim number 716008. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number seven one five nine eight six six, or claim number seven one six zero zero eight two. With approval.
Second.
Most made second discussion. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number thirty-five is report on inmate population, Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, our peak in the last twenty-four hours was six hundred and seventy-three. Five hundred and seventy are male, hundred and three are female. We have fifty with ankle monitor, electronic monitor home confinement, and fifteen...
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Number thirty-six is announcement of interest items in possible future at Chinatown.
We don't want you to forget that tonight is National Night Out, and we will be running along with the last of the... Tonight.
Okay. Any other announcements? Number thirty-seven is call for citizens input and officer concern. Be noted in the journal. Thank you.
[inaudible] Judge, I...